Welcome to a meeting of your Hillsborough County Board of County Commissioners. Representing District One, Harry Cohen. Representing District Two, Ken Hagan. Representing District Three, Gwen Myers. Representing District Four, Christine Miller. Representing District Five, Donna Cameron Sapeta. Representing District Six, Chris Bowles. Representing District Seven, Joshua Wostel. The county administrator is Bonnie Wise. The county attorney is Christine Back. Time is set aside at the beginning of each meeting for citizens to speak on any issue. So we have time for everyone. Speakers are asked to limit their comments to three minutes. Today's meeting is brought to you with closed captioning by Hillsborough Television.
Good morning and welcome to the March 5th, 2025 regularly scheduled board meeting of the Hillsborough County Board of County Commissioners. Would everyone please rise for the pledge and invocation given by our chaplain, Commissioner Gwen Myers?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Oh gracious heavenly Father, I come to you this morning just thanking you for this county, thanking you for our first responders who battled a fire last night and continue to battle this morning. I thank you as we celebrate Women History Month for all the women that work here in Hillsborough County and around the world. Lord, I ask that you bless this meeting, that the staff that prepared the agenda, and that the board would make consideration and approve items today. I ask that you bless this meeting in your holy name. Amen.
Thank you, Commissioner Myers. We do not have any proclamations or commendations this morning, so Bonnie, would you like to review the changes of the agenda?
Yes, good morning, Commissioners. We have one item for board consideration pursuant to Rule 13 of your Rules of Order. This is Item F6 by Commissioner Wostel. It is to direct staff to schedule a public workshop between March 24th and 27th to allow for board discussion on the treatment of Hillsborough County potable water with hydrofluorosilic acid. Request leading experts to present on both sides of the discussion, including special guest Florida State Surgeon General Dr. Joseph Lepido. We have one item that has been deleted, I'm sorry deferred. This is Item B1. It has been deferred to April 2nd. This is to approve and execute the agreement with the State of Florida Department of Transportation for state financial assistance regarding the return of a portion of the previously collected transportation surtax funds. We have one item that has been revised and corrected. This is Item B2. This is to approve and execute which is now three tri-party agreements with the State of Florida Department of Transportation and the county, and additional recipients of Plant City, the Sheriff's Office, and Lowry Park Zoo, Zoological Society, or Zoo Tampa, for state financial assistance in the aggregate principal amount of now $17,131,189. This is to return a portion of the previously collected transportation surtax funds. We have one item that has been removed from consent for discussion or questions by Commissioner Bowles. This is Item A46, which is authorize the procurement services department to schedule the board's review of our procurement protest appeal on April 2nd, 2025 regarding the hearing master regarding debris management services. And 11:45 is a recess for lunch. Those are the changes to the agenda.
Can you motion approve the changes?
Move for approval.
Motion, Commissioner Myers, and Commissioner Cohen, please accord your vote on changes of the agenda.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
Okay, the board will go into the public comment portion of the agenda. Now, the board welcomes comments from citizens about any issue or concern. Your opinions are valued in terms of providing valuable input to board members. However, it is requested at the same time you address the board that comments are not directed personally against staff or the board, but rather the issues. We've set aside 45 minutes for a public comment this morning. The chair will call your name in the order in which you've signed up to speak. Please state your name, speak clearly into the microphone, and each person will be given three minutes. First three speakers this morning are Michael Cross, Denise Herndon, and then David Coleman. Is Michael Cross here? Please come forward, sir. Good morning.
Good morning. Commissioners, staff, and fellow residents, my name is Dr. Michael Cross, a Hillsborough County taxpayer and resident deeply invested in our community's future. I join you today in this capacity alone. Incidentally, I am also an associate professor of instruction at the University of South Florida, a member of the USF Research Foundation's Board, a member of the Well-Built City Board, and formerly a board member of Thai Tampa Bay. I'm also the owner of a biotechnology company and previously worked at USA in e-commerce. I reference these only as to my experience, but I represent only myself. I am here to support Commissioner Wostel's agenda item to volunteer Hillsborough County for a Florida Department of Government Efficiency Audit. I believe this voluntary alignment with Governor DeSantis' Executive Order 25-44 ensuring government efficiency will best serve Hillsborough. Since moving here in 2009, Hillsborough County has grown tremendously. Over the past decade, from 1.3 million people to over 1.5 million today, a 15% increase that demands smarter governance to keep pace. By rooting out inefficiencies as outlined in the governor's order, we can unlock productivity gains that save time and money while simultaneously enhancing services with greater transparency for your constituents. This audit need not be merely about cutting waste. It should be about elevating and honing county government to operate even more effectively for the betterment of its residents. Florida's historical history of fiscal responsibility, like paying down 41% of state debt since 2019, shows us what's possible in Hillsborough County. We can, and I believe we should, lead by example, proving that effectiveness drives excellence, especially in education, where our expansive school district, both of whom my children are participants, our burgeoning state colleges, Hillsborough Community College, and our preeminent university demand nothing less in order to cultivate an increasingly sophisticated workforce. Equally critical is adopting cutting edges like tools like AI, as the governor's initiative encourages. Imagine an AI-driven dashboard showing real-time data on road conditions, budget allocation, school performance, workforce opportunities, and even entrepreneurial ventures, empowering us all with transparency. My work in biotechnology and entrepreneurship is fundamentally dependent on technology to accelerate process, progress. Here, it can revolutionize civic engagement, ensuring our residents are actively aware of the uses of their hard-earned tax dollars. Hillsborough's growth demands bold action. Support for this item is much more than a vote for efficiency gains. It is a commitment to the future where Hillsborough County sets the standard for governance.
Appreciate your comments. Denise Herndon, followed by David Coleman, and then Jason Marlowe, who's virtual. Good morning, Ms. Herndon.
Good morning, I'm Denise Herndon. I approve of this DOGE committee, but also not just eliminating staff, but eliminating what county shouldn't be paying for. We shouldn't be paying for Chad Cronister's name on sheriff deputy vehicles and everything associated with the sheriff's department. The other thing that just me as a homeowner, the swells that, thank God, the county had removed this swell because it is so nice getting into my home without this swell, but why is the county even putting these swells to divert rainwater over a private citizen's property? It needs to stop. I lost faith in the sheriff's department on 9/1/21 when a sheriff deputy falsified a police report concerning me. I've since then gotten body cams, those have been changed twice. This is something serious. I am not delusional, schizophrenic, or psychotic. I've just requested this body cam again of the shooting, and we'll see what it says. I applaud the independent survey you're doing on the stormwater drainage because we definitely need this. Not all of it is just the storms. Some of it are retention, detention ponds aren't clean. Gortle Lake from 60 to Lumsden is always clogged with leaves. And before the storms, I was at the bus stop at Gortle Lake in Lumsden, and that little body of water there was flowing four inches over the sidewalk onto the road. I had to move back, and this was before the storms. But homeless people put grocery carts, garbage in that area, and other areas that are overgrown, and these need to be cleaned. Years ago, my road had a street sweeper when I first moved in, and it was ridiculous because the road was so potted, it was useless. And they repaved it in September of 2020, which was awesome, but I'm not calling for street cleaners on private roads, but our main roads where the stormwater is, something has to be done, especially now. You don't do it before the leaves fall, you do it after the leaves fall. But this morning walking to the bus stop, there's a plant, a weed plant, about two inches or two and a half feet that's growing in a storm drain area.
Thank you, Ms. Herndon. David Coleman. Mr. Coleman here. All right, next speaker, Jason Marlowe, who's virtual, followed by Humira Absal and Chris Steiner. Mr. Marlowe on the line?
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. Y'all have a packed agenda today, so I'll try to get my points out efficiently. Well, the Cross Bay Ferry is imperfect. Hillsborough County should be looking to make multimodal transit succeed, not looking to make it fail. Traffic doesn't care about your political ideology. Traffic is not a Democrat or Republican issue. Ultimately, our region is made better every time we take an automobile off our already overcrowded roads, which, by the way, is why wasting half a billion dollars on 11 additional miles of lane both ways on 275 is exceptionally regressive and wasteful. You cannot decry the money's going to the ferry and champion that cause simultaneously without being a blatant hypocrite. To my first point, if we are going to improve traffic conditions and offer the many folks who either can't afford or use car a reliable means of getting from point A to point B, we need to better fund Hart. Under all accounts, new CEO Drainville is working hard to change the organizational culture and provide steady and stable leadership. Hart remains per capita the least funded transit agency in the nation. Let's engage with our local municipalities and the state to find the financing to improve transit in our community so we can both cut household costs and improve traffic conditions. And lastly, the notion that a state agency such as DOGE would report exclusively to a single member of this board as their sole point of contact is such a bold and naked power grab, it defies my already ankle-high expectations of Commissioner Wostel. Hillsborough County citizens of all stars and stripes do not object at all to more efficiency in our municipal government, but they most certainly object to the way you choose to conduct yourself. Do keep in mind, as JFK once said, those who foolishly sought power by riding the back of the tiger ended up inside. Have a wonderful day, and thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Humira Absal, followed by Chris Steiner, who's virtual, and then Patricia Metcalf. Good morning.
Good morning, Humira Absal. I am here regarding Item F5, which is a request from Commissioner Wostel to transmit a letter stating that Hillsborough County voluntarily submits to a comprehensive Governor's DOGE audit, will provide any and all necessary access and requested information to ensure compliance, and that Commissioner Wostel will be the single point of contact for all DOGE-related items, and will be the EEOG DOGE team's primary correspondent. Please do not approve this request. We are already having, we already have enough state preemptions that block our county and municipal governments from taking actions that are in the best interests of our county's residents. We don't need to hand Tallahassee even more power to make centralized decisions that ignore our local needs. Are we going to cut important county programs just because someone on the Tallahassee DOGE team thinks it's wasteful? Are we going to eliminate county employees who provide important services to our residents just because the Governor's DOGE team thinks they're not important? These must be local decisions, not decisions made by unelected bureaucrats in Tallahassee. The request would also instruct our county administrator to just hand over any and all necessary access and requested information. What if they asked for confidential information on county employees that would normally not be disclosed? What if they asked for confidential information on county residents who utilize county services? Don't green light just giving any and all information about our county employees or residents to Tallahassee. There'd also be no reason to make a single county commissioner the single point of contact for all DOGE-related items. Commissioner Wostel is just one of seven county commissioners. Anointing him king of county DOGE would give Commissioner Wostel disproportionate power to decide what county programs or employees are important and which ones should be reduced or eliminated. No commissioner should have the power to unilaterally defund initiatives that they don't like with little oversight from our commissioners or with no meaningful opportunity for public input. This is just a way to circumvent the much messier and more transparent path of having to go through the regular processes and procedures to make changes. If you're going to send a letter to the governor, send one asking his plans to offset the negative impact of Elon Musk's DOGE cuts on Florida. We're still recovering from the worst hurricane ever here in Hillsborough County. Meanwhile, the Trump administration has fired hundreds of employees, including weather forecasters and meteorologists from the National Hurricane Center. This will seriously undermine our ability to protect our lives and property in future hurricane seasons. We also don't need a county or level duplication of the federal DOGE. Federal cuts are taking place behind closed doors without any oversight by the members of Congress, who unlike Elon Musk, were actually elected. We don't need to add on to the sledgehammer cuts or hapasur directives from Tallahassee and promote it to promote a political agenda.
Thank you. Chris Steiner, who's virtual, followed by Patricia Metcalf and Karen Kress. Is Chris on the line?
Good morning. Hi, I'm Chris Steiner, here to support Agenda Item F6 for Water Fluoridation Workshop. I oppose water fluoridation, which is a pretextual misnomer for the addition of phosphate mining industrial waste, as shown on the material safety data sheet, which says that you should not swallow or come in contact with a fluoride additive, the fluorosilic acid. And I support removing the fluoridation equipment. I'm an organizer for We Are Change Tampa at wearechangetampa.org, and administrator of the Facebook group Tampa Bay Water Freedom at facebook.com/groups/tampawater, where folks can learn more and organize. At my personal website, that's theliberationstation.com, theliberationstation.com, you'll find a wealth of information on various topics, including water fluoridation, by clicking on the blogs page and selecting the Water Fluoridation Blog, and also by clicking on the links page and selecting the section Safer Water, Anti-Water Fluoridation, Environmental, Natural, Fluoride-Free, and Mercury-Free Dentistry. I ask you to consider the new science that you can find in the article on the Fluoride Action Network website, fluoridealert.org, that's dated September 26th, 2024, entitled "Federal Court Rules That Water Fluoridation Poses An 'Unreasonable Risk' to Children," by Stuart Cooper, and the study published in the Medical Journal, Journal of the American Medical Association Pediatrics, that's JAMA Pediatrics, on January 6th, 2025, entitled "Fluoride Exposure and Children's IQ Scores: A Systematic Review and Meta-Analysis" by Kyla W. Taylor, PhD, Serena E., and others, and all, which has since been amplified by the likes of our P. Junior and Florida Surgeon General, Dr. Joseph Ladapo, fortunately, as people increasingly don't have the mental focus or the memory needed to engage in patient conversation on any given issue, let alone take action to often even be able to take care of themselves. This is how tyranny divides and conquers us. Florida has long been known to affect IQ, or studies from Harvard University and others published in the British Medical Journal, The Lancet, and summarized in the National Toxicology Program Report, as I mentioned earlier, released August 2024, and Florida is implicated in a wide array of other health issues, including criminality, that negatively impacts Mexican-Americans and especially blacks more than other ethnicities, per Dartmouth College studies, unlike Google, which is a search engine that can ruthlessly ban search results. Much better search engine to find this and other information for your research is quant.com, that's Q W A N T dot com. Those who are adding water to, fluoride to the water are conducting mass medication without license, which there is no license.
Next three speakers are Patricia Metcalf, followed by Karen Kress, and then Casey Bauer. Good morning.
Good morning. I'm Pat Metcalf, and again, my background includes nurse practitioner, pharmaceutical sales rep, adjunct professor of nursing and hospital management. And I understand that all the data regarding fluoride can be quite overwhelming, and it's not your job to be an expert in dentistry or neurology or to retry a seven-year court case. This has already been done for you. However, it is your job to protect our citizens from harm and to protect their bodily rights. If you believe in a free society where we have bodily sovereignty and are able to decide what drugs we put into our own bodies, then you will make decisions to act with an abundance of caution and allow people to choose if they want to use fluoride or not. If people want, if people believe fluoride works, as you know, it's available in many products, toothpaste, mouthwash, and also in some teas even. But the benefit of removing hydrofluorosilic acid from the water supply is that you would help ensure that accumulation of fluoride is not causing harm to babies, to children, and pregnant mothers. It's critical that we do not set a precedent of mass medicating the public through their drinking water without their consent, or else we could someday find ourselves in a situation where an unruly government is mandating drugs in our water for a myriad of different medical conditions. The request for a fluoride workshop is a reasonable request, as it ensures that commissioners and the public hear all the evidence, pros and cons, and you are given an opportunity to hear the experts from both sides as they present their case so you can make an informed decision. I ask that you approve a fluoride workshop to be held within the next 30 days and not delay this issue. Commissioners all over Florida are taking local action, and Hillsborough County should be no different. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Metcalf. Karen Kress, followed by Casey Bauer and Jeff Chernoff. Good morning.
Good morning. I'm Karen Kress. I'm the Senior Director of Transportation and Planning at the Tampa Downtown Partnership. We have always worked with the city and the county to ensure downtown is a vibrant economic hub that benefits the entire region. Downtown has played a key role in attracting new residents and businesses to our city and county. Our region's rapid growth has come with tremendous challenges, mainly how our residents and visitors can get safely, around, and efficiently. Growing congestion is a threat to the vitality of our downtown and our region. We need to both preserve and expand all the ways to move around our beautiful corner of the state. Our organization strongly encourages you to ensure that the Cross Bay Ferry funding stays local. Florida is already a donor state, receiving only 91 cents for every dollar we send to the federal government. PSTA has really stepped up to be a regional leader in an expanded transit system. They have a proven track record, and I have full faith they can wisely spend the funding allocation that Representative Kathy Castor worked so hard to secure for our region. Without a local boat, this waterborne and congestion-proof mobility option will never realize its full potential. Service aligned with the Tampa Bay Lightning Home Games are a great example of how the system benefits Tampa, not to mention that previous passenger surveys have shown that passengers would not have taken the trip and spent their money here in Hillsborough County if not for this unique trip option. Thank you for your service to our county.
Thank you, Ms. Kress. Casey Bauer, followed by Jeff Chernoff, and then Carmen Edmonds, who's virtual. Good morning, sir.
My name is Casey Bauer, a resident of Hillsborough County for the past 18 years. I like to consider myself a young, or at least aspiring, young professional. Yet each day, it's getting harder and harder to pay rent, auto insurance, and everyday expenses. Supporting multimodal transportation systems like the Cross Bay Ferry and keeping federal funds local within the region would not only increase economic activity both here in Tampa and Hillsborough County and in Pinellas County, but sends a message to me and people like me that these systems are here to stay, here to stay, and I can go back to my family and look at my expenses and make the decision to go down to a one-car household. Putting money back in my pocket, allowing me to spend more here locally, and more importantly, taking one less, taking one more car off the road and freeing up one more parking space for someone who really needs it. Thank you for your time and your commitment to making Hillsborough County a place that supports young professionals. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Bauer. Jeff Chernoff is our next speaker.
My name is Jeff Chernoff, and I have the honor and pleasure of serving as co-chair of the Tampa Bay Chambers Policy Council and as a member of the Executive Committee. On behalf of our Board of Directors and our 1,200 members, I want to thank you for this opportunity to voice our strong support for transferring the U.S. Department of Transportation Passenger Ferry Grant from Hart to PSTA for the purchase of a dedicated passenger ferry. This is more than just a transportation project, it's a strategic investment in our region's future. Every day, thousands of workers, business professionals, and tourists travel between Pinellas and Hillsborough Counties, yet they face limited options beyond congested bridges and roadways. As one of the fastest-growing metropolitan areas in the country, Tampa Bay must prioritize innovative and sustainable transportation solutions. A dedicated ferry service will provide a reliable and efficient alternative, improving mobility while reducing commuter stress. Workforce retention, talent, attraction, and economic growth depend on our ability to move people seamlessly across county lines. Expanding our ferry system strengthens our competitive edge, ensuring that Tampa Bay remains a thriving hub for innovative tourism and economic development. The success of our economy depends on smart, forward-thinking investments like this one. Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, that's why we urge you to support the transfer of this federal grant funding to PSTA, ensuring that our transportation infrastructure keeps pace with the demands of our growing region. Thank you for your time and leadership in shaping a stronger, more connected Tampa Bay.
Thank you, sir. Carmen Edmonds, followed by Kirk Christensen, both virtual, and then Debbie Potts. Is Ms. Edmonds on the line?
Good morning. Thank you for having me on. I'm calling in and asking that you please support Agenda Item F6 to direct staff to schedule a public workshop to allow for board discussions about fluoride in our potable waters. Forty other Florida counties have now removed fluoride from their water systems. Let's join the majority and get this done. And I'd also like to ask you to please support Agenda Item F5 to allow a full audit by the newly established Florida DOGE. We need to follow the federal government on this and allow for full transparency and accountability. I'd also like to ask that Commissioner Wostel be the single point of contact for DOGE-related items. And another wish list would be included in this audit to do something about our schools and do a full forensic audit of our school boards that hasn't been done in over 10 years. Thank you for your time, and thank you for your service.
Thank you. Kirk Christensen, followed by Debbie Potts and Maddy Velasco. Mr. Christensen on the line?
Yes, good morning. Colonel Kirk Christensen, retired United States Army community activist, heavily involved in medical freedom and other issues that are impacting our county. I strongly recommend on Item F6 that we have this workshop. It's amazing that our founder said the government's best is the one that's closest to the people. You being our county commissioners, that capable, amazing group of individuals we've elected are more than capable of handling this workshop, allowing all sides to speak objectively, and then we can then make the decision on removal of fluoride. I strongly recommend you adopt this measure, to have the workshop, and please, don't push decisions that can be made locally here in Tallahassee or to Washington. We are more than capable here, the citizens, and you, our elected representatives, to make those decisions. And healthcare is not a political issue. This is one that affects everyone. Disease doesn't care if you're Republican, Democrat, whatever you want to be, independent, or if you don't care. It is vitally important that we have open and honest and transparent discussions on these issues, and you as our county commissioners are our representatives. I strongly hope you'll recommend and support this workshop. Thank you very much for giving me this time to speak this morning. Have a great day.
Thank you, sir. Debbie Potts, followed by Maddy Velasco, who's virtual, and a Corliss Ball. Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Debbie Potts, and as a former Hillsborough County teacher, I spent 33 years focused on the well-being and development of children. Today, I would like to address a concern for that. To begin with, the fluoride that we are wanting to have removed is actually phosphate waste, which is called hydrofluorosilic acid, and silic acid. My mom always said, if you can't pronounce something, you probably shouldn't eat it. Over 70 studies have shown that high fluoride exposure may be linked to lower IQs in children, especially in areas with naturally high occurring levels of fluoride in the in children, especially in areas with naturally high occurring levels of fluoride in the water. So let me ask you, would you give your child anything that had a black box warning from the FDA? Well, the fluoride toothpaste tubes state, quote, "If more than a pea size is ingested, call poison control immediately," end quote. A recent and astounding ruling on 9/24/24 by a federal judge, Senior Judge Edward Chen, found that the fluoridation of water at .7 milligrams per liter, which is the level presently considered optimal in the U.S., poses, end I quote, "an unreasonable risk of reduced IQ in children," end quote. The court found that the ADA claims of safety were in fact not supported by evidence, and it was also noted that even more worrisome, fluoride consumption is cumulative. Dr. Ladapo, our Surgeon General, cited a study which found an association between exposure of the fluoridated water and ADHD among children in adolescents ages 6 to 17. For the past four years, I have been tutoring kids ages 5 through 11, and I am personally witnessing the ADHD at much higher levels, as well as significantly lower IQs, inabilities to problem-solve, critically think, and even process. Does it make sense to sacrifice our children's IQs and well-being for perceived dental health? Please, let's have a local fluoride workshop where you, the commissioners, can hear from experts on both sides and make informed decisions. I thank you for your considerations.
Thank you, Ms. Potts. Matty Velasco, who's virtual, followed by Corliss Ball and Joseph Boyer.
Good morning, Chairman Hagan and Commissioners. My name is Matty Velasco, and I have the honor and pleasure of serving as the Chair of the Tampa Bay Chambers Policy Advisory Committee and also as the Chair for the Chambers Emerging Leaders Hub for Business Committee. I want to thank you for this opportunity to voice our strong support for transferring the U.S. Department of Transportation Passenger Ferry Grant from HART to PSTA for the purchase of a dedicated passenger ferry. As a young professional, I know firsthand how important reliable, efficient transportation is to building a thriving career and quality of life. Tampa Bay is growing rapidly, and with that growth comes the need for smarter, more sustainable ways to move people between Hillsborough and Pinellas Counties. Every day, thousands of professionals, service workers, and entrepreneurs, including myself, commute across the bay for work, networking, and business opportunities. Yet, we have to rely on sometimes outdated and congested roadways that can add stress, waste time, and hinder productivity. A permanent ferry system will be a game changer for our region. Not only will this give our young professionals greater access to professional growth opportunities, more importantly, it helps us to retain top talent here in the Tampa Bay region. Young professionals are drawn to communities that have smart and forward-thinking infrastructure. Funds have already been allocated from Congresswoman Kathy Castor, and economic success doesn't stop at county lines. It's important that neither should our transportation solutions. If we want to stay competitive, we must invest in mobility that reflects the needs of today's workforce. Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, that's why we urge you to support the transfer of this federal grant funding to PSTA, ensuring that our transportation infrastructure keeps pace with the demands of our growing region. Thank you for your time and your leadership in shaping a stronger and more connected Tampa Bay.
Thank you, Ms. Velasco. We've got Corliss Ball, followed by Joseph Boyer, and then Ellsworth Williams. Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Corliss Ball, and I'm on the CDD Board of the Touchstone Housing Community off of 78th Street and Camden Parkway. I am asking the Commissioners for a clear-cut policy to be put into place that addresses removing parked cars on community roads that have violations. I am also a homeowner there. Back in May of 2023, when I was first appointed, there were 11 cars on the roads of the property that either had no plates or license plates with expired tags. Homeowners have been complaining about these cars at our HOA town meetings. Some wonder if they were involved in possible crimes. So I made a list of the cars and gave it to the community manager, and he was able to get the cars removed except for one. This was a car that had been parked on the road in the same spot for over two years that had tags that expired also over two years ago. I called Hillsborough County Code Enforcement. They came out onto the property, and they sent me back a message with their position, which was, there's nothing they could do. The car is legally parked. Then I called Stark's Towing, our tow company. Their position was, the car has to be red-tagged by the Hillsborough County Sheriff's Department first, and then they can come out and tow it. I called the Sheriff's Department. They came out. They stated the same thing. The car is code enforcement. The car is legally parked. I finally called my county commissioner's office, Commissioner Myers, who called the supervisor of code enforcement, who finally handled the problem, got it removed. Here in February of this year, four months later, our community is up to four cars with violations. I then went to call the code enforcement website and put in a complaint, but the website wouldn't let me fill out the form unless the cars were on private property. I then called their call center and was told the same thing. The cars must be on private property. I called the Sheriff's Department. They sent out an officer, but he didn't want to red-tag the vehicles because he was uncomfortable about it. I called my commissioner's office again, who got in touch with the Sheriff's Department and code enforcement, and Mr. Gross, the supervisor of the code enforcement, is handling it again. So I'm pleased asking you to work on a policy that makes it easy for vehicles to be removed, and also vehicles in areas where signs are posted that are in violation also be removed. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ball. Joseph Boyer, followed by Ellsworth Williams, and then David McAllister. Good morning.
Hello. Good morning, Commissioners, colleagues, and the 1.5 million members of the community. My name is Joseph Boyer, and people know me as Joe the Plumber. And I am truly honored to be elected and appointed as a journeyman plumber on the plumbing and gas board. It is my privilege to serve in this capacity, with deep appreciation and trust placed in me. I am eager to contribute to ensuring safe and effective plumbing and gas systems in Hillsborough County. With over 20 years' experience, I have witnessed the justifiable importance of maintaining high standards in the plumbing industry. Plumbing and gas infrastructures are vital, not only to the public health, safety, but also our community's growth and sustainability. I am committed to deliver my experience, dedication, and strong worth ethic to the board by upholding these standards, supporting both industry professionals and residents alike. As a forward thinker, I am competent for the responsibility for the next generation of plumbers, gas fitters, and other tradespeople who will follow in our footsteps. Our industry is built on skills, integrity, and hard work. It is essential that we foster opportunity for people to enter the trade, receive proper training, and build meaningful careers. Through mentorships, apprenticeship programs, and fair regulations, we help secure a strong future for Hillsborough County trade industries. I look forward to collaborating with fellow board members, industry experts, and local officials to address challenges, improve regulations, and ensure Hillsborough County remains a leader in safe, innovative plumbing and gas practices, current and in the future. Thank you for this opportunity to serve. I look forward to making a meaningful impact and working to build a stronger industry in the community. And once again, thank you, everybody sitting here. Thank you for showing up today. Really appreciate everything you guys do. Have a good day.
Thanks for your service, Mr. Boyer. Appreciate your comments and email. Ellsworth Williams, followed by David McAllister, and then HK Edgerton.
Good morning, good morning, Chair, County Commissioner, and my fellow veterans, Commissioner Sepeda, and Commissioner Corso. Go Army. So the reason why I'm here is that, again, I want to talk about what I call the vulnerable population that are often overlooked, and that's elderly veterans. Elderly veterans, according to some laws that were passed by the Florida Department, is considered six years and older, which means, that's me, too. According to the Florida Department of Veteran Affairs, it's over 719,000 veterans over the age of 75, not including 65. And in a recent report that came from the National Report for Suicide, said that the ages of 55 and older in Florida are the rates that are increasing in suicide. So they're still increasing in suicide for that age bracket. I was surprised to learn that Hillsborough does not track that demographics. I asked the director, and I found that Pinellas does, and they have over 68,000 veterans who are over the age of 65. My question is, how many veterans over 65 actually reside in Hillsborough? Are we keeping our promise to make sure that they get the services that they earned? And what services are actually out there for them to take advantage of? We don't know that unless we know how many is out there and who's out there. The primary mission for our program is to prevent, again, it's prevent elderly veterans from dying by suicide or choosing suicide by addressing the stressors. We are meeting with elected officials. In fact, just recently, we met with Commissioner Sepeda. Thank you, ma'am, for your support and getting a chance to speak to this, for the Director of the Services for Hillsborough. We appreciate it. We have four components in this program, which is referrals, advocacy, collaboration, and counseling. Collaboration is key, because we've got a lot of elements out there, resources out there that are supporting elderly veterans, but they're not talking. They've got a stovepipe. What we need to do is try to bring them all together and see if we can find one or two missions that they can actually agree on and tackle that versus just working in a stovepipe. I want to invite you to our, for us Veterans Council of Veterans, we're going to have a monthly support group starting March 29, 11 o'clock at Mary Lee's Post 5. You're invited. Also, I want to invite you to our second annual Elder Veterans Conference, which is on the 14th of June, and this is an opportunity for all the veterans, the families, caregivers, and resource to come together to actually talk to each other and see what's out there. So you're definitely invited. You'll see more from that. You hear more from that from me. Moving on. So finally, we want to provide mental access to not only the veterans, but the family members and the caregivers. And that's what we're going to provide, Veterans Council of Veterans. We're going to actually, thanks to you guys helping me out, we're going to actually ask scholars, for those who do not qualify for counseling, who don't qualify for our Ford Counseling, we'll offer scholarships as well. Again, this is something that, again, is going to take an entire village. My organization cannot do it. It takes an entire village, and I'm hoping that we also can join together on this. I'm telling Veterans Council of Veterans, Army out.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. Last two speakers, both virtual, David McAllister and HK Edgerton. Mr. McAllister on the line?
Mr. McAllister is not on the line.
Okay. How about Mr. Edgerton?
They have also not checked in.
Okay. Well, that closes public comment. Can we have a motion to approve the consent?
Second.
Motion, Commissioner Wostel, Second Commissioner Myers. Please accord your vote on the consent agenda.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
Bonnie, first item?
Thank you. The first item is Item B2. This is to approve and execute three tri-party agreements with the State of Florida, Hillsborough County, and various recipients. And Kim Byer and Josh Bellotti will present this item. This is relating to the transportation surtax funds and resurfacing projects.
Good morning, Kim.
Good morning, Commissioners. Kim Byer, Assistant County Administrator. B2 is to approve and execute three tri-party agreements with the State of Florida, Department of Transportation, Plant City, the Sheriff, and Zoo Tampa, for state financial assistance in the combined amount of $17,131,189. And November 2018, Hillsborough County taxpayers approved a 1% sales tax known as the All for Transportation Surtax. The tax was collected from January 1, 2019, to 2021, when the Florida Supreme Court deemed it unconstitutional. That tax generated approximately $569.8 million. The collected funds were held by the Florida Department of Revenue until the Florida Legislature approved a plan to refund those tax dollars to eligible taxpayers in Hillsborough County. As part of this plan, $256,402 is being returned to Hillsborough County, City of Tampa, Plant City, Temple Terrace, Sheriff's Department, and the Zoo. The projects were categorized in two tiers. Tier one included 182 projects, and tier two, 22 projects. It's the intent of the Legislature to ensure that funding was available to complete tier one projects prior to moving on to tier two projects. The breakdown of the funding by recipient is provided in this slide. Hillsborough County will be receiving $208 million to complete 56 tier one projects and 21 tier two projects, for a total of 77 projects. In order for the FDOT to distribute directly to the five recipients, the county was requested to enter into five tri-party agreements. B2 is to enter into tri-party agreements with City of Plant City, the Zoo, and the Sheriff. A couple of highlights of the agreement. We mentioned that the agreement identifies the projects to be completed by each recipient, and it also provides for an expiration date of June 30, 2030. Additionally, as part of the agreement, the county is responsible for monthly reporting for all recipients. Next steps will be to bring the remaining FDOT agreements to the Board for your approval in April. That will be the two remaining with the City of Tampa and Temple Terrace, and then the county's agreement. In the meantime, our team will continue to negotiate scope and fee with our design consultants for the major roads. We'll be working on project development for the local roads, and we'll begin construction procurement process for those major roads. In addition, we'll be continuing to meet with our resurfacing contractors to evaluate our schedules and to receive feedback on project implementation. This completes our presentation. I'm here with our Engineering and Operations Director, Josh Bellotti, to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Commissioner Wostel.
I just, I was briefed that the agreements weren't ready yet, so are they now ready?
The only agreements that are ready to proceed are the City of Plant City, the Sheriff, and the Zoo.
Okay, and that's all we're approving today, not the City of Tampa. And what's the timeline for, I mean, I know the parking lots, I think, should be very simple to do. I mean, I know the roads, the major road projects are what's going to have design and engineering, but, so what's the timeline for some of these projects that you're projecting? Do you know?
You don't want to speak to that, Josh? Go ahead.
Yeah, part of what Kim was discussing at the end with the next steps is development of the local road projects. So there's a portion of the projects in the surtax list that are neighborhood roads that we're able to kind of do the pre-planning and development now, even in advance of having the agreement, to try to be ready to move on as quickly as possible once the agreement is in place. We have existing contracts that we'll be able to utilize work order contracts. So within the first year is when we really want to get moving on the local road projects while we're doing that engineering and design and procurement for the major roads. So it's going to be probably a series of local neighborhood roads first, and then flowing into the major roads in the subsequent years, three, four, or five. But obviously, based on the terms of the agreement, our goal is to complete all of them within that five years by 2030.
And the timeframe for the parking lots?
The county's not really controlling the scheduling of the parking lots that are being done by the Sheriff and the Zoo. They're going to handle those independently. Correct.
Okay, cool. I'll move for approval.
Motion by Commissioner Wostel, Second Commissioner Myers. I just have a couple of comments. First of all, I appreciate staff taking their time to ensure that our interests are preserved. Getting this funding, obviously, is a great thing. Anytime you get $208 million to help with our needs, I mean, that's very much appreciated. However, I know I've got a few concerns. I know staff does, too, as far as the deadline to complete the projects. According to staff, at least in my briefings, that could be a challenge. Additionally, I know there are many projects that also have stormwater improvements as part of them that were not funded by the state. And when that's the case, historically, we wait till we have the funding for both projects, do them at the same time, so we're not resurfacing a road and then tearing it up a year or two to add in the stormwater projects. So additionally, we have, you know, a work plan that we approved last year. We're going to do another one in this year's budget, include our priorities. In addition to that, obviously, we have, you know, Van Dyke and Lithia Pinecrest that are not cheap. And I just want to make sure that our priorities are not delayed because we have to hit an artificial deadline by the legislature. And I don't want our funding to be taken away from one of our projects in order to make the deadline projects that the state prioritized that may not, you know, be one of ours. So additionally, when cost increases occur, which will happen every year, I assume we're going to have to absorb that increase. And I just want to be careful that, of the commitments and requirements that we're agreeing to. But by and large, this is, you know, this is wonderful. And I just appreciate staff doing their due diligence, as well as, you know, with all the consultants and contractors now, so when we do have the contract, that we can hit the ground running. So appreciate all y'all's work. Commissioner Wostel? all y'all's work. Commissioner Bowles?
Yes, thank you. Can you tell, or give some estimate as to how many projects may overlap with things that we've already done or are currently in process of doing? Is there a handful? Is it a dozen? There would be some cost savings there, wouldn't there?
Well...
In a manner of speaking?
Yeah, regarding things that have already been done, there was only three roads on the surtax list for the county that had either been recently completed or currently funded. So those are the only three. There are, as we look at the list of roads, over 100 other CIP projects that could involve stormwater, or sewer, or those other kinds of capital projects that overlap with the limits of those roads. So kind of like Commissioner Hagan was indicating, that's where the coordination piece has to take place, and that's what our staff and our consultants are going to be working on now with the project development to figure out how we plan and sequence those things so that we're not coming back and doing rework later. So there is quite a bit of that. Like I said, over 100 projects that we're working to coordinate.
And about how many project managers do we anticipate having doing this? Because I think to Commissioner Hagan's point, you know, we don't want to put, we don't want to put some of our projects that we've already been in the hopper out of the way for this deadline that we have to meet by 2030 and five years from now. That creates a problem for us.
Absolutely. It is a resource challenge. We didn't receive additional resources to manage these projects. So we have, we're limited by our existing project management staff, and we would like them to be able to stay focused on their current projects that we have in the CIP. For the surtax projects, what we're doing is working with our seven different design consultants to have them provide project managers, so to provide that staff supplement, additional project management support for the surtax projects.
Commissioner Wollstall?
When I was briefed, and a couple of points that I brought up, I talked about, which is what repaving projects might interfere with what we're doing or require us to repave and then tear up for a project. And I know that you guys said that you're working on that. I don't imagine that you have an answer today, and I don't expect you to, but you are working on it after we talked, right? So I have a very long, I have the very long backlog road list that you guys supplied me with. We did a briefing several months ago, I think, yeah, definitely before the election, so it would have been before Commissioner Bowles got here. But are many of the roads that got selected by the state on that road, that backlog list that I did a presentation on, do we know that yet?
Yeah. Many of the roads that are on the surtax list are roads that are, in fact, in not the best condition and do need to be resurfaced. It wasn't pulled from our backlog in that order, so it wasn't all roads that were at the top of the list.
Sure. I get it.
But many of them, many of them were and do need to be resurfaced, yeah.
Okay. And I don't know. I think it would be productive for us to see and say, hey, you know, people that have been submitting complaints, that there's some type of easy Excel that's done, so we can reach out to folks. Number, I had one in my office on the phone earlier today, right before I got here. They're number 416 on the list. How depressing is that for somebody to call in and say, hey, sorry, your road's number 416 on the maintenance log. Your road's number 670. For us to be able to associate what lists were picked easily, conjoined in some manner on an Excel spreadsheet to say, okay, this number has been removed or is going to be repaired. You're funded. So just a thought.
The intent of the monthly reporting would be to have a viewer for, designated just for the surtax projects, where folks are able to determine where we are on each project in addition to a list of those projects.
Okay. Again, motion by Commissioner Wollstall, Second Commissioner Myers. Please accord your vote on B2.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
Next item?
Thank you. The next item is item B3. This is a resolution, oh, sorry, allocating funding for a kids' place, and John Mueller will present this item.
Good morning, Chair. Good morning, Commissioners. John Mueller, Director of Facilities Management and Real Estate Services. And I'm here today for the item on a kids' place. As you may recall, at your last meeting, the board recognized the Kids Place of Tampa Bay with a commendation for their work fostering, supporting foster children in our community over the past 15 years. Since opening their doors, they've provided a safe, nurturing home to more than 1,700 children and helped keep over 500 siblings together, something that's very important, obviously, for kids in crisis. Today, we're bringing forward the funding agreement to provide a kids' place with $150,510 to help cover the cost of building two restrooms as part of their new planned activity center. This project is a much larger $8.1 million expansion that they've been working towards since 2022, raising funds, I'm told, over $5.5 million now, enough to start construction, from a variety of sources to make their vision a reality. It goes without saying it's going to allow them to expand the critical services needed. So the item is being presented today as a regular item, consistent with the board policy for outside agency funding requests. The capital improvements team will be assisting with the inspection of this work as it proceeds before any reimbursements, reimbursements are made. And today, with me today is Samantha Mellon, who is the Development Director for a kids' place. She's here to show their appreciation for this request, and also if there are any requests, to hear from them directly.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Mueller. I don't see any questions or comments. Can we have a motion?
Move approval.
Second. Motion, Commissioner Miller, Second Commissioner Myers. Please accord your vote on B3.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
I'd like to thank you very much. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, John.
Bonnie?
The next item is item B4. This is a budget amendment. This is related to the county's issuance of solid waste bonds that occurred in January. Kevin Bricki will present this item.
Good morning, Kevin.
Good morning. Good morning, Commissioners. Kevin Bricki, Management and Budget. Item B4, request your approval of a budget amendment to properly appropriate and realign $100,931,775 of bond proceeds resulting from the county's successful January 22nd sale of its Series 2025A and 2025B solid waste bonds. These bonds will provide funding for the Resource Recovery Fly Ash Separation and Recovery Building, landfill improvements, landfill leachate system, the Northwest Transfer Facility improvements, as well as funding related bond issuance costs and the refunding of a previous line of credit. Thank you.
Any questions or comments? Can we have a motion?
Move approval.
Second. Commissioner Cohen, Second Commissioner Myers. Please accord your vote on B4.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
B5?
Thank you. The next item is B5. This is to receive, approve, and adopt administrative action plan for the Community Development Block Grant Disaster Recovery Program. Tom gave a presentation last meeting about this, and this is an update regarding the action plan and others.
Good morning, Tom.
Morning, Commissioners. Tom Fessler, Chief Financial Administrator. Item B5 is asking you to receive, approve, and adopt an administrative action plan for the CDBG disaster recovery funds, and to also authorize either the Chair, the County Administrator, to execute required certifications after review by the County Attorney's Office. The second item that's a part of this agenda item is to request your approval to request the 90-day extension for the full action plan. We have engaged a consultant as of, I believe, yesterday to assist us with that plan. And however, we do believe we will need at least another 90 days to be able to produce the full action plan. And then finally, this item asks you to approve a computer matching agreement that enables the county to receive FEMA data through HUD, which will assist us in creating the action plan. Upon approval of this item and the action plan, or the administrative action plan, 5% of the award will be available to us, which is approximately $35 million in administrative funds that we will be able to use over the course of the six years that we have to spend the entire allocation. With that, I'm available for any questions.
Thanks, Tom. Commissioner Wollstall?
Do we actually know yet, I just got briefed on Monday, I'm assuming the answer hasn't changed, if we're actually getting this money?
Commissioner, we have not received any indication that we will not, so we're just kind of proceeding as if we will.
I already know where this is going, but I'm going to reiterate my point that the federal government is $36 trillion in debt. They have just been exposed to at least $1 trillion of fraud, waste, and abuse over the past 43 days. There's no inkling in my mind that suggests that they could possibly afford to give our county, who has an annual, let's just call it, revenue stream right now of $4 billion. Is that right? We're at about $4 billion of annual revenue?
Our revenue, that's approximately right, about $4 billion. Our operating budget's about $4 billion, yes.
Yeah, yeah. So I'm just trying to keep it in layman terms.
Yeah, we typically try to match the revenues with expenditures, so revenues are approximately $4 billion, yes.
Thank you. So that they, that we are at $4 billion, and they're going to give us $700 million. There's no way that this fiscally makes sense in my mind. And what are we, what is this, is this coming from HUD? And what's it going to be spent on?
Commissioner, there are basically three different categories. It's either infrastructure. It is economic revitalization. The third category is housing. And so we'll be developing a plan around those requirements, including that in the action plan that we bring back to you. Approximately 70% of the funds have to be used on low and moderate income individuals.
Yeah. None of this, this money doesn't make sense. I mean, we didn't even know it was coming, that the allegations are that possibly it was from NACO. It just, this is, it seems like a poison pill, and it just seems like another opportunity for us to maximally spend people's money that's been printed at record levels from the federal government. So I just can't participate for those reasons.
Commissioner Myers? There's a motion by Commissioner Myers and Commissioner Cohen. Please accord your vote on B5.
Motion carried, six to one. Commissioner Wollstall voted no.
Thanks, Tom. B6?
Thank you. The next item is item B6. This is regarding emergency purchases related to Hurricane Milton for the Water Resources Department, and Lisa Ray will present this item.
Good morning.
Good morning. Thank you, Mr. Chair, Members of the Board, Lisa Ray, Director of Water Resources. And I am here to present item B6, which is asking for approval of emergency purchases related to Hurricane Milton for the Water Resources Department at an additional total cost of $7.4 million. There are two final remaining items that we are working on as a department to address from the hurricane. That includes the low-pressure sanitary sewer systems down in the Ruskin-Waimama area. Control panels and electrical panels were flooded out. We are still waiting for those supplies to come in. And in the meantime, we do need pump trucks to pump down each individual home to prevent backups into the home. And the other item is the compost facility, which was flooded out. And because of that, the compost was unusable. We did stockpile it for a period of time, but now we are in the process of being able to dispose of it. Now that all the debris sites have been cleared, we're able to spread it on some of our land, and some of it is also being used for other purposes. So we ask for your approval on these additional emergency funds. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Myers?
I'm going to move for approval, but also to ask staff, as we are planning for this year for hurricane season, that we consider hiring MBEs and DWMBEs to work on the project as we are planning now.
All right.
Second.
Motion, Commissioner Myers, Second Commissioner Cohen. Please accord your vote on B6.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
Bonnie?
Thank you. We can now go to the Commissioners section. The first one is item F1. This is Commissioner Bowles' item regarding the nonprofit funding guidelines.
Commissioner Bowles?
Good morning. Hope I don't get the crazy feedback. What I would like to do is, I'm presenting this to, when I got into office, I had, I took a few moments to kind of look at a few things, and one of the, I do things in a little bit of a methodic method. And one of those was trying to find as much, we'll call it, not waste, or bloat, or anything like that, but where we can be more efficient and where we can be more methodical about what we're doing. And one of those came up was the nonprofit organizations. And I know they've come up in the past as a place to look at ways to recover some money. But if you look over the last 10 years, we've more than doubled what we're spending and how many nonprofits that we're supporting. Not that it goes to any level of waste that we're saying that the nonprofits don't do really good things in our, in our community, which absolutely, I absolutely agree that they do. But when you look at some of the metrics and some of the stances and some of the ways that we're actually approaching how we're giving the money, I think that we just need to do it in a fashion that matches some of our other counties out there. I polled about 30 different counties, and our, excuse me, our policies are kind of lacking on counties that have 40,000, 50,000 people in there and give out way less than what we do. So what I wanted to do was just kind of project to the rest of my board members that what I was intending to do, and kind of get some feedback in a workshop, that we can talk about this in the open, be transparent about it, and also provide an opportunity for the nonprofits out there to know that, you know, we are your champions, but we need to have champions not, that are still here, not the ones that have come and gone. And that's a problem when you start looking at some of these that have been getting funding for more than 20 years at amounts that make no sense sometimes. So I think that that's what I'm trying to do, and I would entertain a motion to have a workshop on a few...
John, just to clarify, we're going to add this to an already scheduled workshop, budget workshop. Is that...
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right. So there's a motion by Commissioner Bowles, just to add this as an item to a previously scheduled budget workshop, seconded by Commissioner Myers. Commissioner Wollstall?
Thank you. As you might know, Commissioner Bowles, this is my policy. And I would encourage you, as you go through it, our policies that govern the board are numerous, and many of them are not even followed. Specifically, almost every single one of those flags violated our own policies. We have a non earmarking policy on the Board of County Commissioners that's violated every year without regard to it, which kind of makes having policies senseless. I would encourage you to, that when you're looking at it, see how much that not only we give them, but check out how much they also then use our, rather, people's property taxes to then match and justify state and federal to double, triple, quadruple up on the amount of taxes that they're getting, and to what percentage taxes fund their organization, which is going to be the biggest eye-opener. So I always want more creative ways to improve it, strengthen it, make it better. The problem with what we have right now is that places like Echo, which have come before us multiple times and do do a good job, are, get caught in the wash of the ones that have been here for decades and seem to be a handshake dill for political reasons, which I quite frankly find very distasteful. So when is the next budget hearing?
We are working on dates currently.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Commissioner Bowles?
Just to respond, and I appreciate that, and I agree. As I was going through some of these, it was a little eye-opening to kind of see how far back some of these go, some of them into the 90s. And it makes you wonder, you know, why some of these, there's oddball amounts of some of these. And notwithstanding, it's a burden on our staff as well to have to track down and keep these contracts going and maintain those. I know probably, it's probably eight hours a week just for our two directors that do, to take care of this, notwithstanding anything that they're doing with their staff. So, you know, again, it kind of falls into efficiencies. I was, I used to do performance improvement way back in the medical industry, about 30 years ago, and this is kind of my wheelhouse in a little bit. So I have dug, I'm looking, and absolutely agree with you, Commissioner, that it is kind of eye-opening when you start seeing the doubling and the percentages that are out there. So we're looking forward to taking care of these. If we want to take care of them, it's great, but one time, move on, and have a champion, and then have some sunsets on some of these as well.
Commissioner Cohen?
Thank you. I just want to add, you know, any, anything you can give us in advance of the workshop so that we have... so that we have the material beforehand would be helpful. That way, when we all come in, we're educated and ready to have these discussions, but happy to, happy to participate.
To the extent that I'm allowed to do that, yes, I will.
All right, we got a motion, a second. Please accord your vote.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
All right, Bonnie?
Thank you. And the next item is, yours, Commissioner Hagan. The first one being item F2 regarding the Ellsworth G Simmons Good Government Award.
Okay, yeah, the board members, the selection committee made an outstanding recommendation of Louis Betts as a recipient of this year's Ellsworth G Simmons Good Government Award, and I'll just ask for a motion to approve and schedule it for the May 7th.
So moved, second.
Motion, Commissioner Cohen, second, Commissioner Winstall. Please accord your vote.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
Bonnie?
Thank you. The next item is item F3 regarding the contract for the county administrator for me.
Okay. Board members, not going to review Bonnie's performance. I believe most of us believe it's exemplary. Trust you review the contract extension is fairly consistent with the recent changes that we adopted to Ms. Lorton's contract. Specifically, it's a three-year extension, it's a one-time pay equity increase of 5%, an adjustment in the deferred comp, and a change in the performance review process. So with that, can we have a motion?
So moved, second.
Motion, Commissioner Cohen, second, Commissioner Myers. Please accord your vote.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
Thank you. And commissioners, thank you. I know we're trying to move on, but I just really appreciate it. It's truly an honor and a privilege to work with all of you and our incredible staff and public servants in the community. So I know we have challenges in the future, but I look forward to working with you and getting it all done. Thank you.
That item definitely deserved a double thank you. Next item.
All righty. And the next one is for the contract for Melinda Genzarly, item four.
Yeah, board members, this is to provide a contract to Melinda who's never had one. It's, the salary is similar to her predecessor bought the benefits, or similar to Bonnie and Janet's. The one difference is the term. I know we've had discussion, there could potentially be a change in her office. Of course, if that did occur, it wouldn't be until November 26. And I just, I thought this provided time to transition should that happen, which, again, we don't know if that will or not. So that's the one reason why it's not three years. So with that, can we have a motion?
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion, Commissioner Myers, second, Commissioner Cohen. Please accord your vote.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
Bonnie?
I didn't know if Melinda wanted to say a quick thank you.
The county internal auditor, that feels really great to say. I am just humbled and truly honored. I want to thank each of you for entrusting me to serve in this important role to the organization and our citizens. I also really want to recognize the county internal auditor's office staff, Arabelle, Jeremy, and Abram. They are committed to the county. I also look forward to our continued collaboration in working with Heidi Penner and her team in the Clerk's County Audit Department. And in closing, just express my sincere gratitude to everyone who has helped me to get here. If I had to name everyone, we would be here for hours, and so I will spare you that lengthy list, but just say that I am committed to paying it forward as we move ahead together. So again, thank you all so much.
Thank you very much. Bonnie?
Thank you. And the next two items are Commissioner Winstall's. The first item is F5 regarding the DOGE item.
Commissioner Winstall?
Thank you. I'll clear up a couple of things. Many of us get appointed, the reason that we pointed Commissioner Miller to the Flooding and Stormwater Management Assessment Task Force, it's just us volunteering to take on more of a role. Commissioner Hagan is currently still, I don't even know if any of us were here when I voted on it, it might have been from a different board entirely, but he's the single point of contact, right? So none of us even voted to appoint him to be the single point of contact for the, for bringing baseball or whatever it was here, and that policy is still ongoing, and we didn't even vote for it. If a billionaire came in like David Straz and donated more to the arts, not only would I support Commissioner Cohen in doing that, I would beg him to do it so I didn't have to be involved with that process. I have been long advocating for and diving in deep on issues such as nonprofits, emergency fire rescue and management services. I am still technically, even though it's kind of hit a dead wall, because I need the state to take one more action. I got half of it done before. Unfortunately, it's kind of out of our purview, so I have the other half to accomplish on the state's side. I am very passionate about this issue. Being appointed as the single point of contact is not appointing any other authority other than taking on the load of the work. DOGE can't, not even the US DOGE can make anybody do anything. They make recommendations, and then the leaders of that department have to execute and decide on whether or not those recommendations should be followed. The same thing that would happen here. The state of Florida does not possess the constitutional authority to make these changes at the local government, but we do have an opportunity. We always talk and celebrate the federal government giving us loads of money. We just voted on 700 million more earlier today. This is an opportunity for us to leverage state's sales tax assets, an AI team that we do not currently have access to, which is an innovative approach. While I deeply respect and constantly praise our leaders of our own budget office, the fact of the matter is, is that we've had multiple decades of never having one true forensic audit throughout our processes of budgetary solutions. That has resulted in many transformations to different technology platforms that have resulted in us quite literally finding bank accounts that we lost and/or forgot about just in the past two years. Those are just realities that exist that we deal with. It's not really to point a finger, it's really just to further justify and say, hey, technology has rapidly changed over the past couple of decades. We've gone to very antiquated analog systems to very futuristic digital systems. Things might have fallen through the cracks. Every organization has waste to identify, and no one is suggesting that we're riddled with it here, but most of what I think you'll find is operational efficiencies and improvements. Unfortunately, I cannot speak as elegant as Dr. Cross speaks. I met him a little while back, and he reached out and asked to come. I learned a lot about him today, as you could probably tell from his introduction. He is far more qualified than probably even me on some of these topics. But I think that this is an excellent opportunity for us to not create unnecessary conflict. One of the things, I believe, a couple of you were at the governor's town hall or press conference. He expressed concern that he felt like local governments might find pushback, that he felt he had the right. I say that we just lead from the front on this issue. There's no need to wait for that unnecessary conflict and say and declare that we have home rule. Why, if we truly are acting so effectively, then we should have nothing to hide, and we should embrace these new resources. So my motion is there in the packet to transmit this letter from the BOCC to the governor, notifying him that the Hillsborough County government voluntarily submits to an audit by the normally-formed Florida EOG DOGE executive order. That is my motion, and I would hope for your support on this item.
I second that.
Okay, we got a motion by Commissioner Winstall, a second by Commissioner Cameron One thing I want to, I want to point out, Commissioner Winstall is accurate that we have appointed commissioners to lead task forces or to be our representative with respect to the raise issue. I want to say, I was certainly was not the single point of contact. I think that candidly is unprecedented. I was selected as the BOCC representative in discussions as part of a broader discussion where we designated the Tampa Sports Authority as the lead agency in negotiations, and we did that because it was a similar structure to how negotiations occurred with Raymond James Stadium and with Emily Arena. But I was certainly not the sole point of contact. In fact, all expert staff members were the official point of contact. And I haven't led in any discussions or negotiations. In fact, I said on several occasions that that was not me or staff or the mayor, but that was, in fact, our outside counsel. It wasn't an elected official. Additionally, when we had that conversation, I pointed out that every time that we had met, either with the team or with internally, it was always myself. At the time, it was county administrator Mike Merrill, Bonnie, as I'm not sure your title, I think it was Director of Finance, and the county attorney, which was Chip Fletcher. Also, I just want to point out, I didn't feel that, that the elected should be at the table when actual negotiations occurred. I thought this should be a buffer, and so the leaders or the point of contact were actually Bonnie, Eric Hart, City's Chief of Staff, and our outside counsel. So just wanted to kind of clarify that a little bit. We have had representatives on task force or leading task force or as, just as a representative, but we haven't been the sole point of contact. Additionally, you know, personally, I think any contact with officials, you know, should be by staff. They are the experts, so. And I don't think we need to direct, there's one point in there about directing the county administrator. I don't think we need to direct her to do anything. She's adept at her position, so much so, we just extended her contract three years. So just my thoughts. Commissioner Myers?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and I echo everything you just said. I'd just like to add, when we receive notice from the federal government or the state, we are mandated to do whatever they're asking us to do. We follow their guidelines coming to us. I think in this case here, we have our county administrator, and we have our county attorney's office representing us, and they should be involved with this as well. It should not be a single commissioner. I can't support what happened back years ago before I became a commissioner. I can speak to what I'm facing today, and no single commissioner should have control over a report that our county administrator or our county attorney is not involved with. They should be at the table as well to represent the county and receive all the information at the same time if a commission is there. That is not our role. We set policies. That is their county administrator, that is her role. County attorney's office, they look at everything for us with legal sufficiency to make sure it is in compliance when it comes to us as board members. Those are my comments. I would not be supporting the motion.
Commissioner Winstall?
This is directing, administrator-wise, when this board makes a vote, what are we doing to you?
You're directing me to take action?
We're directing the county administrator. So I'm very confused by the chair's comments. When we vote, we are directing her to take action because that's our job is, we're literally here to direct the county administrator. It's kind of our whole job. So that was a very, very confusing comment. All that this is saying is that when they come, just like when Black and Veatch, honestly, like, I was going to make a suggestion when they come up, today's, it's unnecessary for these extremely expensive consultants to be here today. Because I think, and I was even confused on that, I want to lessen the amount that they come here because we entrusted it to Commissioner Miller's office. She is the single point of contact for the task force, and she's out coordinating with other officials, but nobody's saying that they can't come here and ask for any information, and that all information would not be disseminated. But the same, the same point that we've just had about sunshine law is that there can be unnecessary delays with them asking simple questions and communicating. That's all that this is. This is not suggesting or empowering, no commissioner can do anything unilaterally. We've said this over and over. Commissioner Cohen, that's actually a direct quote from you when we were talking about the emergency fire rescue and management services, which I did find something on, and it was very helpful, and I worked with staff on the issue. This is simply making it to where staff is directed to do this, and that the governor's office can communicate to any of us at any time, but if they have specific issues or concerns that might not need a board vote, but more of a directional issue, they can utilize my office as the sole point of contact. I've demonstrated clear efforts that have had demonstrable results in improving efficiencies in this government, and that's all that this is. This has not override any of the county commissioners' abilities. This is, have, has had significant precedence in the past. Now, I was briefed that staff still treats whatever motion which was not able to be brought to me yet, or policy that's in place, before six of the seven county commissioners were here. None of us voted on a policy that staff is still operating under, that assigns Commissioner Hagan as the, I was told, sole point of contact, chief negotiator for the raise. That was your briefing to me.
I did not say sole point of contact and chief negotiator.
You said sole. You briefed me in my office, and have anybody found that policy?
Not a policy, and yes, we do have the information.
And so, so you right now act under the premise before six of the seven county commissioners were even here, you are acting as still an effective policy that Commissioner Hagan is the sole point of contact for the raise negotiations and the chief negotiator?
No, that is not what I said.
Then what did you say?
I, and we do have the language, and it says that he is a representative from the board, on behalf of the board, but negotiating is staff.
Okay, so he is the sole representative. Now we're just mincing words. Okay, so is he the sole representative to the raise?
He is the board's representative. He does not do the sole negotiations. We do the negotiations, and he reports back to the board, and you're, I think, parsing my words.
So it's sole representative, yeah, and that's all that this is, single point of contact, sole representative. Now we're just unnecessarily mincing words. I don't know why we're so resistant to an efficiency audit. That should be the most concerning thing on your minds right now.
Commissioner Bowles?
Hopefully, we're not. I don't think we are, but, damn it. The, I actually, I really, I do support this. I think using the state and their ability and their technology that they may have, let's use them. They have the ability, they have a lot, I'll call it deeper pockets, if you will, and certainly probably a larger staff to approach this, and it's Governor Sanis's objective. I mean, he put it out there, so you know that he's going to want to help out. Leading from the front, I'm all about that as well. I think we should. Why not lead from the front? I don't think we need to, you know, compel. We're going to do it anyway. They're going to ask for it, we're going to give the information. I don't, I think one of our public speakers was worried about confidential information. No one's confidential information is going to be released. I mean, we are governed under the state legislative laws that provide that. We won't release that information, and I'm confident that our staff won't let that information go out as well. I have confidential, you know, as a public servant before, and certainly now that I don't want released, and I know that that would be kept, you know, in its own little black box, if you will. Rather than kind of, you know, going back and forth, is there, is there a possibility, I'm just going to throw this out there, is, you know, we have, we do have an internal auditor that maybe in conjunction with your office, is it possible that we can have her work with you or receive info as a staff person and then kind of have you work with her? I mean, she does a wonderful job. We know that, obviously, it's unfortunate that we had to wait this long, you know, 18 months to give her a contract, but we have an internal auditor. And I know that she can't, she's been, or her office, excuse me, has been kind of hamstrung over the years with the, the way the charter has kind of stripped away some of the powers that were there, but she at the very least could serve as a repository and receive the information, maybe it would tamp down some of the hostility that seems to be brewing, and then coordinate with you. That could also work with staff as well. That's, that's not necessarily a motion, I'm just throwing it out there.
Commissioner Winstall?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, I mean, that, I mean, that is, well, technically, we should add, and the county administrators, the county internal auditor's office, because she is one of the only people that does not answer to the county administrator. She's her, she's her own thing, but as you said, I mean, I was very dumbfounded that she could not she could not internally audit our internal, I was, I was, I didn't believe her when she told me, frankly, because I just didn't realize that that could be true. So, I could simply amend it to, how about I amend it to that my office will be the representative for DOGE-related items, subsequently direct the County Administrator and the County Internal Auditors to comply and work with the Florida EOG DOGE requests, and then she can be as fully involved, which I expected her to be anyways, and she's an odd executive that works for us. So, so I will accept that friendly amendment to include that the County Internal Auditor's Office to comply with and edit the single point of contact to being the commissioner's representative for DOGE-related items, which again, they all have to come back to the board before we do any changes whatsoever anyways.
Commissioner Bowles.
Thank you, Chair, Mr. Chair. And I think it adds a bit of a, an apolitical element to it, so it doesn't look like it's partisan one way, not that you, you would be, per se, but provides a bit of an apolitical element to it that maybe some of us would be a little, at more rest with, supporting that, having that additional individual involved.
Okay, so essentially, we're adding in the internal auditor into the process? I mean, are, is the board still comfortable with the unprecedented position of being the single point of contact? I mean, I guess we're including Melinda into the process with, is this with staff? Or what's the?
Point of order.
Make of the motion?
Point of order. The motion was changed to sole representative, which is similar to the exact same policies that staff still operates under.
Okay. Commissioner Cohen.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not going to be able to support this motion. I think that DOGE can ask us for anything that they want, the Administrator can give it to them, and all seven commissioners can have whatever discussions they want with the Administrator at that time. I just, I think that we all have different views on what is wasteful and what is, you know, we all have just different policy interests, and I'm not comfortable with ceding any part of this to any one commissioner. I, I think we, that anything that touches on the overall efficiency of the government should be brought to each of us equally.
Commissioner Myers.
Thank you. I'm going to say the same thing. One, if the governor wants to request anything from Hillsborough County Government, they can, without a doubt, and we will provide that to them. We don't need a commissioner to be involved with it. When they send something to Hillsborough County, we comply. We comply, and it would be approved by our County Attorney's Office and by our County Administration when it comes to us, to tell us what information they're requesting. We'll be informed at that time. Again, I'm not going to support the motion.
Okay, so we have a motion by Commissioner Winstall, second Commissioner Cameron Cepeda. Please accord your vote.
Motion failed three to four. Commissioners Cameron, I'm sorry, Commissioners Miller, Cohen, Hagan, and Myers voted no.
Right, thank you. Next item?
Next item is item F6. This is Commissioner Winstall, your item as well.
Commissioner Winstall.
Dr. Latipo reached out to our office and after communication suggested that he'd be willing and interested in come down and have the workshop that was discussed. It looks like the December 26 date, though, that there was a mess-up on the Administrator's calendar, so I guess that's Hillsborough Day. So, either way, the motion would have to be changed to seek a later date that's maybe already reserved. I know that we have a couple on the calendar, but he can't come on the 26th. And then whoever would be interested in coming, something like 30-minute time slots was the idea, for him to present his case, that's what he had asked for, to submit why he believes that we should follow his guidance that's already put forward, and then whoever would like to oppose them could come. I have somebody who had reached out that might be interested, he's like from Brandon Dental Group or something, he seems to be attached to the American Dental Association. So, what's on there is the motion is to direct staff to schedule a workshop with special guest, State Surgeon General Dr. Latipo, and the date would be to be decided.
I'll second it.
Okay, we got a motion by Commissioner Winstall, second Commissioner Miller, Commissioner Cohen.
So, when we had this discussion a few weeks ago, and you and I disagreed on the merits of it, I told you I'd be happy to participate in a workshop, and I'll, I'll stand by that. My, my concern related to the date is that, to my knowledge, there is now a bill pending in the legislature that might deal with this issue statewide, and my thought is that if you'd like to do this, we ought to do it after the session is over, because if they go forward and do it, it's going to take the decision out of our hands, and I just, I've seen so many times in the past where we get, you know, we do a whole lot of work and we spend a lot of time on something only to find ourselves preempted once we've had the discussion, and given that it's just a matter of weeks until the end of the session, I would support it if you would just move it until after the session is over with, with the idea that if the state takes action and it's not in our hands, we would dispense with doing it, but if they don't, happy to have the discussion and lay it all out there and, you know, see whatever everyone wants to come up with. My position hasn't changed, but, you know, let's, let's listen to everybody.
Commissioner Winstall.
But what if you're wrong, and this is medically dangerous to children, then one, three months, which I think session ends in like June?
I think it ends the first week of May. So, honestly, I don't think we're talking about a lot of time here.
Two months, and if it is really truly hurting kids, like, again, Barack Obama's judge said, wouldn't you think that two months is worth, or one month a day?
I think if you look at the calendar, if we have a workshop in April, you would have to then schedule to vote, at least one vote on this matter. I think it would take us into May anyway. I really think, just for the purpose of not getting bogged down in something that could end up being a moot point, that's, that's my only thought on this, so.
Richard Winstall.
Wouldn't you want to hear from him either way, even if the state comes in with the law? I mean, if we, if the public hearing, you're right, though, it might be in April, and then we have to schedule for a vote since we don't take action at workshops, we could already have the information. I mean, and I would just say, you know, we've had open dialogue before. The reason we don't do workshops is because oftentimes, no one, no one talks, or half of us don't even show up. That's why we haven't done workshops, so wouldn't you want to just take every precaution possible to try and protect children, which was the court's ruling and medical findings?
Well, I'm not going to rehash this discussion with you, other than to say that I think the other side of it is, you know, that, that if this is a bad idea, we'll, we'll execute a bad idea sooner. So, I'm, I'm, you know, trying to meet you halfway on this, but I just, I don't want to have a discussion about this if the state is going to take.
Your mic. Commissioner Cameron Cepeda.
Yes, I'd just like to say I definitely support having this sooner rather than later. It's very important. Thank you.
Okay. We have a motion in a second. Bonnie, I just want to clarify, scheduling a new workshop requires five votes, or a majority plus one?
It does.
Okay. I don't see anyone else in the queue. We've got a motion in a second. Please accord your vote.
Motion failed three to three. Commissioners Cohen, Hagan, Myers voted no.
Okay, next item?
The next item, we have two staff reports. The first one is to receive the monthly update on the independent stormwater assessment. Josh Bellotti is here, and then we also have our representative from Blackened Beach, John Dinges.
Good morning.
Good morning. Mr. Chairman, Commissioners John Dinges. Just with Blackened Beach. Thank you for the opportunity to give you an additional update and look forward to providing this as often as you need. Just as a brief reminder, our project framework, objectives and tasks, the objectives are to evaluate the cumulative flooding impacts of rainfall and hurricanes in 2014, evaluate the stormwater needs, and develop conceptual recommendations. So, that's the big picture objectives for the overall effort. Our Phase 1 tasks, which are well underway and which I will give a status report this morning, our data collection, review and evaluation, preliminary analysis of the Hurricane Milton conditions in particular, and then stakeholder coordination and input. Our upcoming Phase 2 tasks are in discussion right now with your staff, and we will be developing those additional scope of items to implement the objectives through a second phase of work that we anticipate ending in June of this year. So, briefly, a status update. On our data collection and evaluation, we've received most of the information from the county team, and they've been super collaborative. We have frequent phone calls, and we collaborate quite a bit on getting that information. That's been very helpful to us. Our preliminary analysis of the flooding is, is in progress, and we anticipate reaching some preliminary findings this month. Our interviews with the Commissioners and the City of Tampa Council members has been completed, although we have an additional city council member from Tampa that would like to speak to us, and that is scheduled, I believe, for next week. I have that on a later slide. Our stakeholder engagement has been very active. Met with Twin Branch Acres Property Owners Association last Friday, received some very good information. Yesterday, had the opportunity to spend some time out in, in District 4, in the Wiggins Prairie area, and spent the whole morning, and really received a lot of good information from one of the constituents that lives out there. Tomorrow, we have a follow-up with the Shangri-La community to hear some additional concerns and input from them. So, that, those types of activities are going to continue through this whole effort. The public engagement is also really cranking up right now. We've coordinated with the communications team on the approach to that. In fact, just yesterday, let me give, just yesterday sent the stakeholder engagement framework for that public engagement to the communications team, and so we're going to be gearing up the scheduling of that community engagement. And very, like, right now, just over the next week. So, on the front of data collection, review and evaluation, there's a little bit of detail here for you. We're looking at lake stages, pump stations, all the pump stations, reviewing all that data, the inspection reports, and framing recommendations around that. We're continuing to intake additional data as it becomes available, and then areas of concern, or I like to call them focus areas, we've identified many of those already, many of you know those, we talked about them, we're going to document those areas of concern, and those will help us as we go forward, be focused in our recommendations. Finally, on stakeholder engagement detail, as I mentioned, we're coordinated with the communications team on the approach, and we're initiating the scheduling process with a target of, let's say, mid-April for those engagement opportunities with the public. We are continuing coordination with, with the Water Management District. They are a key stakeholder, and then, as I mentioned, Tampa Council Member Henderson, we have a March 11 conversation, and as far as I know, that's all we've, we've had several members, I think that's four, then that'll, that will make the fourth or fifth that we've heard from with the City of Tampa Council. In addition, we are scheduling the City of Temple Terrace for an upcoming conversation, not on the calendar yet, but it's coming up in the next couple of weeks. As a reminder, our potential capital and policy considerations are listed here. We presented those last time, and we're keeping those in view, so you know where we're headed with this effort. So, Ms. Chairman, members of the Commission, glad they answered any questions you may have.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate the report. Commissioner Cohen.
So, on this community engagement piece, how do, how do you see this working? My understanding at the beginning is that we were going to do one meeting with each commissioner or one meeting in each commissioner district. What is your, your general thought of how that's going to work?
Commissioner Cohen, we envision a, a meeting in each, or public engagement opportunity, I'll call it that, a meeting in each of the four districts. That would be open to all stakeholders, the municipal governments, and we certainly want to notify those municipal governments of those opportunities well in advance, and we intend to do that. The purpose of those will be to, number one, educate on, on this effort, what our findings are, preliminary findings, and then what we see going forward would be our recommendations, but also to receive information in a structured manner and use the public, I think it's called the engagement hub, use your engagement hub as a way to receive more information from constituents.
So, if there are four meetings in each of the four commission districts, Madam County Attorney, can we notice this in such a way that all of the commissioners are, are allowed to attend all four of the meetings?
Yes, absolutely. We just will comply with sunshine law.
Okay, so we won't have to worry about that, and we can affect, essentially go to any of the ones that we want. Will you, with the districts, coordinate with each district office in terms of what the location will be in that district of where the meeting will be held?
Yes, certainly.
And the date?
Yes, certainly, Commissioner. And we've, we received input during our meetings on some potential locations. They'll be in contact with your staff and with the communications team over the next week or so to get dates and locations nailed down.
And finally, when, when do you see this? April, May timeframe? Is that about what you're seeing?
I think mid-April's a good timeframe, and if we need, you know, if that slides a little bit until later April, that's, that's really good. We want to catch everyone after spring break, in my mind, give us time to do, you know, preliminary findings from the data analysis that we're doing, but we want to catch everyone before they, you know, disappear for the summer, if you will, and make sure we hit just the right timeframe. That's our thinking around it.
And I think it would be a great idea, when we do these meetings, of course, to have our hurricane materials available to people. Hurricane season is right around the corner, and this is going to be an audience that's going to be very interested in anything that we can give them to help them prepare. So, thank you very much, and we'll look forward to it.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Commissioner Miller.
I just wanted to say thank you for coming and giving us, giving us an update. I know this was an added task to your list of the many things we've asked you to do, but keeping the public informed is very important to me of where we are in the process, so I appreciate you being here once a month at these meetings. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Miller. I think communication's critical right here and out in the community, so thank you for that.
I appreciate your hard work on this. Can we have a motion to recede the report?
So moved.
Second. Commissioner Cohen, and then Commissioner Myers, please accord your vote.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
Next item?
Mr. Chair.
Okay. Board members, Commissioner Miller was out of the room for, I guess it was F6, and she would like the opportunity to vote on it, so can we have a motion to reconsider? It'd have to be by either Commissioner Cohen or Commissioner Myers. Typically, as a courtesy.
As a courtesy, I'll, I'll make a motion to reconsider.
Okay, so a motion to reconsider F6 by Commissioner Cohen. Do you have a second?
Second.
Second Commissioner Winstall, please accord your vote for reconsideration.
Wait, we're only voting on reconsideration?
Yes, sir.
Excuse me, I'm sorry. Okay.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
All right, then, we're going to have a motion again for F6. Anyone want to take any action?
I'll make the motion.
Okay, motion by Commissioner Bowles. Do you have a second?
I'll second it.
Second. Commissioner Miller, all right, please accord your vote on F6.
Motion carried. Motion failed. Three to four. Commissioners Cohen, Hagan, Myers voted no.
Okay, G2?
G2, this is the last staff report. This is to receive a report on intercity crossbay ferry performance and ridership trends, and John Muller will take us through this staff report.
John.
Good morning, Chair. Good morning, Board. Once again, John Muller, Director for Facilities Management and Real Estate Services. I'm here today to provide your report on the intercity crossbay ferry. First slide, please.
I've never done one, that's why.
Next slide, please. Next slide, please. Don't worry about it, I hit the button. Just make it big for me. I'm going to start anyways. This slide is to put the crossbay ferry in context. Please note on this slide, there are three items on this page. there are three items on this page, definitely related, but not the same. Let's start up top with the cross bay ferry timeline. This cross bay ferry pilot program was actually started in 2016 by the city of St. Pete. Today, the CBF contract, and you'll hear me say that, cross bay ferry CBF, I'll go back and forth, resides with Hillsborough County. And I will note that this is the final and last season, eight seasons over nine years. Why does Hillsborough County have the cross bay ferry? Well, the county took the lead on the second pilot program as part of the South County McDill Ferry P three agreement. That's at the bottom left of your page, related, but not the same. The current contract was created from the P three. The South County was terminated in 2023. Hillsborough County continued to honor its commitment to its partners, St. Pete, Tampa, and FDOT, to complete the pilot contract, which ends this year. I'll say again, the South County agreement is over and has been over. It does not live in our current CBF contract. It's not live in our current cross bay ferry contract. So a year before the South County ferry was canceled, staff was given direction to assist Hart with applying for a grant to purchase a vessel or vessels. The intent was primarily for a vessel for the existing intercity cross bay ferry routes and that could also be used for a proposed expanded system. However, once that P three was terminated, the grant, while awarded to Hart, was not implemented by Hart. Hart has not received the 4.8 million. Again, this is a related item. The vessel is not in our current intercity cross bay ferry contract. And I'll mention the last item on this slide. You'll see on the timeline, mentions of the ferry operator, HMS Fairies. HMS notified us in 2024 that their parent company was undergoing a Chapter 11 bankruptcy, their parent company being Hornblower. Hornblower emerged. However, in January of this year, we were notified of two items. First, HMS Fairies is now owned by a much smaller LLC, Title Maritime. And second, the new HMS Fairies is advising us that they'll be seeking a change of vessel in May. I mention this because our contract calls for a very specific type of vessel for the service to run. We have advised the new ownership to put their request in immediately. The final months of the contract this year will of course depend on what vessel we review. All our partners were, have been advised of this. This next slide are some basic points. If you could advance, please, I've advanced down here. Thank you. The next slide, I'll, some basic points I want to share. The cross bay ferry has been referred to as transpoetainment. You can see that, yes, it does remove traffic, but not necessarily commuter traffic. The ridership is predominantly weekends and evenings. Ridership in the past three seasons has averaged 65K. The current year is lower, primarily due to lost days. And again, same thing has happened with last season, the change of the dock from the St. Pete Pier to Port of St. Pete. So that's affected it. Next slide, please. This slide illustrates our county's financial commitment to a pilot program. Over the eight seasons, we will have contributed 1.4 million and subsidized each rider trip $3.17. An equal amount was provided by partners, such that the total subsidy is over $14. I'll note that during this current contract, ticket prices were capped each way at $12 with discounts for senior militaries and others. Next slide, please. Observations. So a future cross bay ferry is better managed by a transit authority or it even could be private. We note that unlike the county's facilities and real estate department, a transit authority has a much greater opportunity for funding eligibility and their marketing platforms are in place and exist. Secondly, the largest stakeholders are the cities. They provide the docks. As well, they also receive the bulk of the economic impact. The survey estimates are in the range of $40 to $50 for 70% of the riders that ride and embark in terms of how much they're spending. Lastly, I mentioned that the current contract that is finishing originated from the P three. The future opportunity is with an RFP that encourages competition. As well, given that the ridership is not necessarily commuter, dynamic ticket pricing could be an option to be explored versus caps. Last slide, please. As we ask you to consider the acceptance of this report, I would like to be very clear about a few points. Hillsborough County's management of the CBF will end this season. By this report, we wish to provide you with the total amount of ridership and money spent. We do know that PSTA has expressed that they're working on an RFP. Should PSTA request our staff to helping an RFP, you as a board could authorize us to participate. However, to be clear, participation would not, participating, participating in preparation would not be committing to any subsidies. Again, our observation is that the pilot program was for the proof of concept, not for the proof of subsidies. So we'd like to see the, the RFP address that. An RFP that required pro formas would be appropriate with a determination that could be made that if, if somebody were asked to provide subsidies, what source and what's the ROI that justifies that. Lastly, on the vessel grant transfer request that Hart received from PSTA, that is a decision for the Hart board. A goal of our report today is to provide our entire board, including the four commissioners who sit on the Hart board, with information on the intercity cross bay ferry to provide additional context for you with regards to that. I'll leave that at that. Regardless of the decision on Hart, whether they're transferred or not, I'll just note that $1.2 million in grant matching funds will stay with the county and at the appropriate time when given board direction, the staff can take action. The funds currently sit in the CIP program. With that being said, I'm here for any questions.
Thank you, John. Commissioner Myers?
Thank you. I was going to defer and make a motion, but I wanted to see if any other board member has any comments before I make the motion.
I don't see anyone else in the queue.
Okay. My motion is to accept the report and the contract end this season. And if PSTA asks our staff to help with technical assistance, that our staff would be available to assist.
Okay. We got a motion by Commissioner Myers, second by Commissioner Wallstill. Any other board comments? If not, please accord your vote.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you, John. Bonnie?
The last item is item A 46. This was the item that was pulled from the consent agenda by Commissioner Bowles and John's, John Hollingshead is here to present this item.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is John Hollingshead. I work in procurement services department. Agenda A 46 has two parts to the recommendation. The first part would be to authorize the procurement services department to set a meeting date of April 2nd with a time certain to review the decision of the hearing master regarding the debris management services administered and managed by the procurement, by the engineering operations department. And the second piece of that would be to receive the record on, the report on record that's attached to the backup of the agenda item. So with that recommendation, recommends approval.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Bowles?
So as I understand it, this is two years in the making, pretty much, pretty close to.
Yes, sir.
And with that, you know, I think that two years ago, we didn't know what we know today. Of course, that's easily said, you don't know what you knew yesterday, right? But I think that what we have experienced over the last six months, let's just, you know, we just heard from Blackened Beach a few moments ago, that I can't necessarily support low bidding disaster management and resource recovery. To me, that's a problem that you get, kind of one of those, my personal opinion is that you get what you pay for. And I know that there's a process that we have to go through for these things to occur and that's part of the process that the county goes through. And I know that, you know, this, we're here today because of a protest that was filed and we went through a particular way was with the ITB and where we are now and the, you know, with the bidding process versus an RFP process.
Yes, sir.
Right. And, you know, to, I think there are some examples that have come up both here recently and in the past that provide me pause that make me wonder if the best way forward is to move forward with an RFP versus this bid process. Because we've now here set the standard here locally. I mean, we praised, she's still here? Yeah. We've praised Paula Quirks and Ms. Byers Department on how well they picked up. Now, I know that was dovetailed into some state contracts that allowed us to get people in here. But I think all the, the contractors overall have, don't have really capacity themselves. It's more they subcontract out. It's a contract and they subcontract out. And I'd hate to be, you know, arm wrestling with Pinellas. If something hits us, it's probably going to hit Pinellas. I don't know if there's, unless it comes this quick. If that's the case, or Pasco, or Manatee, where we're now competing with those counties for those subcontractors who they may out, let's say, outbid us. Now, do we have the ability to have these emergency, you know, do emergency funds to do that? But then we're caught in a pickle, kind of over the barrel. So, you know, I think that because I feel it's a little stale, we're here two years later, based upon an objection by one particular company. I, you know, I don't know, I don't know any of these people. All I know is that I feel that low bidding disaster recovery, after we set this standard so high and got something that eight years of, is it eight years, Ms. Byer? Of debris cleaned up in literally three and a half, four months? You know, it's unprecedented. We were speaking hypothetically before and at $7 a cubic yard, I don't know if that's going to, and change, 785 I believe was what it was, you know, if we're going to be able to do it at that rate where we're going to be competing against our local area for those monies. So I just really have some concerns with this and I wanted to, you know, rather than wrap it up in the consent agenda where you just kind of roll through and we just stamp approval, that we need to have some conversation about that. And, you know, I'm prepared to make a motion that we dispense with the whole thing and start over again. But I'd like to hear maybe some comments if that's.
I'll second your motion.
And I, let me tell you, from experience, I, first of all, thank you for pulling this. I can't thank you enough for doing it because I've, I've lived through it and to me, low bidding situation is a recipe for disaster. I've seen it before many, again, many years ago, but you have, we had a company in here and then you have contracts, whether it's with the state or FEMA or, you know, throughout the state, they're getting paid a heck of a lot more. And suddenly our, our disaster lease not being picked up. I'm like calling staff, you know, I thought we had X amount of trucks, we had this. Well, they left and went to where they're getting paid more. And that's happened time and time again. And so, and then above that, all too often, just going straight low bid throughout the county, at least when I've been here, historically, we go to the lowest bidder, even though there's a more, much more reputable firm that might be a little bit higher. And then ultimately we award the contract, find out they can't do the work or they come back with change orders and we end up paying more than we would have anyway. So I think we should go back out, do an RFP and I fully support the direction and the motion on that. Okay. So we got a motion by Commissioner Bowles and a second by Commissioner Cohen to put out an RFP. Is that correct?
And to the extent that we could do it in an expedited fashion, I know we're bumping up against the, the date of June, you know, but Mother Nature doesn't know it's June. Mother Nature will make things happen when it happens. But to the extent that we're able to do that and that we're legally allowed to do that, you know, that we can reject the bids. We don't have to accept these bids. Is that correct, ma'am?
That's essentially what, what you're directing is that, that you want to go in a new direction, given this extended timeline and all the unique circumstances associated with this particular bid.
Exactly.
And our learned, you know, what we learned during Helene and Milton. So yeah, we'll work with staff to make sure that the motion is carried out in a manner that accomplishes that.
And in the very least, we could, if we get caught again over a barrel, we could extend any of these that we have by emergency order or something to that effect. Is that correct? Ms. Wise?
Well, I'll look to John, but I think we have extended before and I think we could extend again.
We have, the current contracts with Ashbrit and Phillips and Jordan expire May 31st, 2025. So.
We could stretch those out.
Yes, sir.
If we needed to.
We could, we could.
Right. And I know Director Stormer's not here. So that at the very least, we could kind of coordinate and try to get something quicker. I know we could do expedited RFPs, you know, that we don't have to get bogged down in the crazy red tape that kind of finds its way into our mechanations here.
We'll make it work.
Yeah. So, thank you. I appreciate you. So.
Okay. So we got a motion in a second. Please accord your vote on A 46.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
Thank you, Commissioner.
And then just future discussion items.
Anyone have any future issues? All right. Seeing none, we're adjourned.